Like it up here. Um, we're starting out with our friends Jess, Rachel, Norrell and Jen from High Country.
Hi, everyone. I will get us kicked off tonight. My name is Jess Hoover. I'm HC3's Climate Action Director. Thank you so much for having us here. We're going to talk about um our program successes from last year, some of the things we've been up to this year as well. And why are we here talking to you about it? Because the town of Dillon supports many of our programs, so we like to share with you the impacts and how we put your um funding to good work in Dillon. Okay. Do I have a clicker? Doesn't matter. I'm happy to have you. Uh, we can skip this one, too. Look at the pretty pictures. Okay, um astute observers may know that this photo was taken from um, oh gosh, I think they're in Corinthian Hills. I'm gonna mess up the neighborhood, but they have a beautiful home that overlooks Lake Dillon and the 10-mile range. This is um Dave and Lucy, and they participated in HC3's Energy Smart Program and received a rebate to install the solar panels on their, they're, they live near you. They told me that, yeah. They were, yeah. Okay, great. I know the name of the street. Neighborhoods fail me. Um, so what we worked on last year, we are working on what we call the Renewable Energy Mitigation Program. This is basically a program designed to reduce energy use outdoors. This was um a strategy in our Climate Action Plan. And so what we did is we've worked with the town of Breckenridge. They actually adopted this as policy last year. And then we're working with staff at the town of Frisco to do council presentations as well. The way RAMP works is that we look at things like snowmelt, so heated driveways, or if folks have very large outdoor gas appliances that are permanently, you know, have a pipe. We're not looking at solo stoves and things like that, um but things that use a lot of energy outside, because we account for our energy use inside via our building codes, but we're not considering energy use outside. So through this program, we're trying to discourage that. People can still do it. What we ask is that with with certain exemptions in place, um they either offset the energy used by these systems with onsite renewable energy, or they can pay into a fund that we use for other energy efficiency and renewable energy projects within a jurisdiction. So it's actually been very successful in town of Breckenridge. Their building department has noticed that people are decreasing the size of their snowmelt systems in order to comply with the program and then choosing to install solo panels onsite um if they need to, which is great. We developed a new climate marketing campaign. This is really exciting. The point of this is to inspire locals to take more action. It hasn't been fully launched yet, um but we will be doing more of with it later in the year. We did use the the campaign for our Energy Smart ads that ran over the summer. We're using animals native to the high country to connect people with climate and encourage them to turn their climate stress into climate action. And Solarize Summit is our countywide program to encourage and facilitate residential and commercial installation of solar panels. So that's been going for five years now. We're um Norrell is now managing that program. And so we're having a great year. And then we also got a donation from an individual who really wants to help uh locals, Summit County locals, the workforce install solar panels. So he gave us funding to um, I should say, they gave us funding to install um it provide 10 additional $2,000 rebates to income-qualified Summit County locals. So up to 160% area median income, we can add $2,000 on the incentives that they receive, which is great. Um, Climate Action Week last year was a week full of activities to engage residents and visitors in fun events to help them take action on climate change. It culminated in our annual EV ride and drive, which was really wonderful. We also hosted a number of um heat pump workshops last year, because heat pumps are something we're going to be hearing more about into the future. There are really great federal incentives for installing cold climate heat pumps, and we want to make sure that people understand what they are and how they work and that we have contractors in the community who understand what they are and how to install them. And then finally, one of our biggest accomplishments last year is we got a grant from the EPA to do a climate equity plan. So last year was full of community outreach and engagement. We did a survey that was available in both Spanish and English. We hosted focus groups. We actually partnered with CMC and came over to Dillon. Um, last, last semester, the spring semester last year, um and engaged with all of the students in their English as a second language classes to talk to them about their needs, so that we could figure out how to best um modify our program so that we are helping more people in the community. All right, we can go to the next slide. Energy Smart is our residential energy efficiency program. So in 2023, we worked with two Dillon households to complete home energy assessments. During this, we have someone who is a home energy auditor. They come into the home, they do all sorts of diagnostic testing to figure out what are the energy efficiency needs and make recommendations based on their findings. We also helped two Dillon homeowners complete improvement projects to act on those findings. So those homeowners received an average rebate of $850, and again, this is funded from the town, and their total energy bill savings um are $830 a year, which is great. So the next slide is our cumulative impact since Energy Smart has been active in the town of Dillon. So you can see, we have done 15 retrofit projects. Those 15 homeowners are collectively saving over $8,000 a year, and their energy bill, which is really wonderful. And the money that they spend on their projects, the rebates we provide, are leveraged and resulting in 141, um, oh, almost $142,000 in economic impact, because we're hiring local people to work on these projects. So that's money that's going back into the community, that's paying um folks to do the air sealing and insulation and all the good efficiency work. Um, last year, we started a new program where we provide extra incentives to income-qualified Summit County locals. And so our income qualification goes up to 160% of the area median income. We're really trying to help that missing middle, and I would, you know, and it's important to note that Northwest COG also has programs that provide free support for folks who earn under 80% AMI. So we try to, if we have folks within that income category come to us, we try to push them to the Northwest COG programs, because they can get a lot of really wonderful support. So we're looking at, you know, 80 to 160% and really trying to help the missing middle there. Um, 50% of the projects we completed last year were income-qualified, which is really wonderful. We're super excited to be helping, you know, our local workforce make these improvements. Okay, so resource-wise is our sustainable business program. Norrell runs this program for HC3. So what she does is she goes and visits local businesses, does a sustainability assessment. She connects them with energy advisors from Excel who come up here and they do walkthroughs with the business as well. So she did seven assessments in the town of Dillon last year, which resulted in actually 10 lighting upgrades from local Dillon businesses. A lot of these were also provided for free from Excel. That's a great um service she provides. She's able to directly enroll um inject directly connect the businesses with Excel's different small business programs. A lot of them qualify for these free lighting upgrades, which is great, because they're not paying any money. And then they are reaping the benefits. So you can see last year, the businesses saved, you know, almost $19,000 in their energy bills just from doing these lighting projects, which is really significant. Um, was LaRiva this year or last year? Last year. Great. One of them was LaRiva Del Lago. And Norrell was able to work with the property manager, and they were, they actually were able to go into every single commercial entity in that building, and then they also replaced all of the lighting in the garage. So that's why the savings are so big, because they did a major, major upgrade. So you can see, since we have been offering the resource-wise program in Dillon, we have worked with over 50 businesses, providing them with this free sustainability advice. And collectively, they are saving almost $30,000 a year on their energy bills as a result of completing projects recommended by HC3. So what have we got going on year-to-date? We are working on an update, updated greenhouse gas emissions inventory. When we did our initial Climate Action Plan in 2017, the stakeholder group said they would like us to do an updated inventory every three years. It's an update year, so we should have that um in a few months, ready to share out with everybody. We are, like I said, we are in the midst of Solarize Summit's sixth year. We are hosting our EV ride and drives again. And even more exciting, this year, we are doing a Spanish-language EV workshop and ride and drive in Dillon Valley. It's going to be at the elementary school on September 14th, and we're really excited to be able to offer that to Dillon, the residents of Dillon Valley. Um, we are doing more heat pump workshops for contractors and residents. Like I mentioned, we've been working on the RAMP program with the town of Frisco in particular this year. Additional community events coming up. So we've got the Spanish EV Ride and Drive on September 14th. On the 21st, we're doing our community-wide EV Ride and Drive at the Frisco Adventure Park. And then, and I can be happy to share out these dates later for anybody interested. On September 25th, we are hosting Caroline Gleick, who's a professional ski mountaineer and environmental activist. She's coming to speak at um the Riverwalk Center in Breckenridge about adventure and advocacy. Basically, how we all have skills as folks who live in mountain towns to be environmental advocates. And so she's gonna talk about, you know, you don't have to be a professional advocate to be an environmental activist. I don't want to use the word activist, because it can be an advocate um and to be an environmental steward. And we all have the skills already within ourselves to speak up for programs that protect the planet. So with that, I believe I will turn it over to Jen.
Which municipalities have not adopted RAMP yet?
Um, only Breckenridge has adopted it so far. We've done a bunch of work sessions with um the BOCC. They have talked about incorporating it with the next building code adoption cycle. And then we did a work session with the town of Frisco, and I know that they are working on um just with their staff to figure out how to set up the program, and they're also working on legal language.
Awesome. Thanks, y'all. I'm Jen Shank. I'm the Executive Director of the High Country Conservation Center. In case it wasn't obvious, that's my son. I guess he's my biggest fan club. Um, anyways, I would love to talk to y'all for a few minutes about recycling and zero-waste programs. And then my colleague Rachel will um finish off the presentation talking about water conservation. So in terms of Strong Future, and by the way, I think you all know this, but the town, most of the towns don't directly fund recycling and waste diversion. We're so fortunate in Summit that recycling is primarily funded by Strong Future, the ballot initiative mill levy that was passed back in 2018. So 2018 was a few years ago at this point, and so I don't have to read to you all of these accomplishments. But suffice it to say, we have made, I mean, not just HC3, but Summit County and the Scrap Summit County Resource Allocation Park, which is the landfill campus that has recycling center and compost up there, but we have made really, really big impacts. I mean, you know, Scrap built the Silverthorn Recycling Site. We have expanded programs, like we have a lot of glass collection throughout the community, several in Dillon. We've expanded, um, we've added mattress collection, carton collection. And then we're working, actively working on a number of programs that I'll hit on in just a few minutes. But I'm, I'm super proud of everything that we've accomplished with working with Summit County government on recycling with that funding from, from citizens, property owners. Next one, please. Thank you. And then one more. Thanks. So um, one of our biggest program successes at HC3 is our food scrap drop-off program. Hopefully, a lot of y'all participate in the program. But we had, you know, just in the, in 2023, we had almost 1,000 new residents sign up for the program. We currently have about 3,000 participants in the program. And you can see that, you know, we diverted almost a half a million pounds. So super substantial, makes a big difference. I will just put in one plug that what we need to do at this point is not only to continue to increase this program, but we're probably reaching, we're probably reaching a plateau with the number of residents involved. So we're really looking into 2025 to get more commercial participants, like whether it's restaurants or grocery stores that are not currently participating. So we are actively working on that. If you all have connections, that would be helpful. Please let us know. Then next, please. Um, and yeah, on that former slide, you don't need to go back, but I will just mention that for anyone participating in the program, we do give out a bucket of compost each spring, and people get really excited about that. So marketing, we're doing a ton. I mean, one of the primary roles of our organization is education and outreach on behalf of Summit County Government. So the idea is that anyone who has a recycling or composting question can call us and not need to call the county. And so, I mean, our website, you know, we, we continue to rebuild it every single year. It's performing incredibly well, and we have an amazing marketing team led by Rachel and several others in our office. So. Next, please. You could, thank you. Yeah, those were a couple of videos that we sent to PDF, so those aren't gonna play. In terms of resident outreach, hopefully, some of you all have seen this in Dillon. But we are going out and we are putting oops tags, which are these nice little tags that we'll put on recycling bins certain times of the year. We're not hitting every household in Summit County. We're hitting about 16, last year, we hit 1,600 bins. But we're putting these little tags on recycling bins. We're just popping the top on recycling morning, and we're just giving people personalized input. And it's all positive, like, hey, you can recycle more of this, do a little bit less of this. But it's not meant to be punitive. It's just meant to, to improve recycling. And we are seeing that it works when we go back around to households that we can hit twice in a year. It doesn't always happen, but we are seeing dramatic improvements, especially in the neighborhoods that aren't um short-term rentals, for obvious reasons. If you hit rental twice in a year, probably isn't gonna help much. Um, we're also doing recycling, um educational things. We call them Stump the Recycling Experts. So at our local recycling centers, we're doing that. We did 15 of them last year. We're doing a number of them in 2025. So if anyone has questions, there, we promote the events in advance, and we actually get quite a few people coming to the recycling centers. We shift them around to Frisco, Breck and Silverthorn. But they've been super successful in just engaging people where they're already recycling. And then K-12, I mean, we're, we're in the schools every single year. We're trying to hit every single third grader, I believe it is, with our Rockies Recycler Program. And then you guys probably see our columns in the newspaper. Next, please. Business assistance. So we essentially, through Strong Future Funding, we have a couple of different avenues for helping businesses and other organizations like nonprofits or HOAs. One of the, one of these avenues is a, what we call a small grant program. And so, I know there aren't specifically Dillon businesses up there, but we have had our um Latin Outreach Coordinator. She's been talking with Tacos Tequila um this year, and we're hoping to get some movement in Dillon. But essentially, we have grants available, like a couple thousand dollars, to help businesses or HOAs to go do an onsite visit, onsite visit um and really work with them on their current challenges, hopefully get them to add recycling or composting, or if they're seeing a lot of recycling contamination, like, again, we'll go out there one-on-one and work with them. So if you all know of anyone who might be interested, please let us know. And then switching to the next slide, please. Um, this is our big grant program. I think it might have just been in the paper recently in an Ask Eartha column. But last year, we gave out $325,000 in grants, um, the "we" being, being Strong Future and a big committee. Uh, I know the town of Dillon applied for a grant that they weren't able to use last year, but these are some of the amazing programs that we've been able to support for these grants. These are bigger grants that are from $25,000 to $75,000. So we're really looking for bigger projects that either support the local workforce or underserved residents and/or have a big diversion potential, like can divert a lot of tons, um, things that are new and different. Next, please. Thank you. Um, so pay-as-you throw and universal recycling. You all know that this has been adopted and implemented in Frisco and Breckenridge. By all accounts, it's going very well. It's making a difference. Our staff on the ground are seeing way more recycling bins um in Frisco and Breck than they've ever seen before. So that makes like our oops tag routing, like take, take a lot longer when we're out there, like checking those routes. But those are the small bins on the right-hand side there. Summit County Government, I believe, is also moving forward with adopting pay-as-you throw and universal recycling. Universal recycling is just the commercial component. Um, so yeah, I just wanted to mention that that's happening, because it's been a big focus of HC3. And then, CND, sorry for the acronym that we did not define, construction and demolition. And I know John has been super involved in this process um on your behalf. But we completed a five-year plan back in 2023 with some goals. Just so you all know the scope of the problem here, about 30% of the waste that's going into landfill comes from construction. It is a, it is a massive, massive challenge. So, I mean, we need to be increasing traditional recycling. We need to get our uh food waste out of the landfill. And then finally, we need to get our construction materials out of the landfill. They're big, they're bulky, they're things like wood that could be broken down in a compost pile. Like the number of pallets going into landfill, when we can actually currently recycle, up at the, recycle might not be the right word, but what they do is they chip them and they make them into mulch. So it's a recoverable material that has very high value. So um, we hired a consultant um at the request of the Board of County Commissioners. We just went through a four-meeting stakeholder process that we just concluded in June. And we have a very high-level policy framework that we developed with the Zero Waste Task Force. That was a stakeholder group, and we added some um, I, I could tell you more about that, but I'm short on time. Anyone has questions about the Zero Waste Task Force? I think Carolyn is very well versed on that, or John. But we added some builders to that group, and we have these very high-level policy recommendations. So if any of the towns are interested in pursuing that in the future, I think the first step is gonna be getting Summit County Government onboard, because they own and operate the scrap. So we are working with the county commissioners, and the town of Breck is also very interested in starting to dig a little bit deeper into what a policy ordinance would look like. And so HC3 and Scrap staff have been asked to really do some more stakeholding with the local builders and come up with some more detail, so that we can bring it back to the county commissioners and Breck Town Council for starters. I don't have a timeline on that, but I'm guessing that may not happen until early 2025. But that's where we are on that process. And then final, thanks. 2024, um, I would say a little bit more of the same that we talked about. But we, yeah, we, we have essentially half of our 10 staff in the office dedicated to working on recycling and zero waste on a regular basis. And so you can imagine, we spend a lot of time, and we're always trying to make our programs better. So if you all, you all have any input um on how we can do that, let me know, or any questions for me. Otherwise, we can talk about water. Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Rachel Zerowin. I get to work with this team and others on water conservation, among other programs. And before I kind of get started on what we achieved in 2023, I just want to say a big shout out to town of Dillon staff. Their engagement in developing these water conservation, conservation programs, which have expanded dramatically just in the last two years, has been critical. It helps us develop programs that work for the community, work for the local governments, and it's something that works across the county. So I can't emphasize how important that partnership really is and critical to success. Um, so if we look back at last year, uh, what we saw is that, you know, we got, we received grants from the state and from the river district, that was back in 2022, to develop this irrigation assessment program. And it was a slow, a slow roll. Last year, we really started seeing people taking advantage of the irrigation assessment program. And then this year, we're starting to see people make upgrades. So what they do is the professionally-trained irrigation um folks will, professionals will come out to your house and look at your irrigation system and see, how can we make it more efficient? How can we make it work better? Water at the right times of the day, using the right equipment that is functioning properly. Um, and what we found at the end of last year is that one of these larger HOAs cut their water bill in half. So they assessed, they, they got their assessment in '22, and then did their rebates in spring '23. By the end of the summer, saving, I think it was almost $4,000 um just on that one quarter. So that's great. So my hope is that this year, we start to see more of that proof that we can show to people and say, this really works, and show them how they can save money. Um, so one of the other things we did last year is that we secured a state turf replacement grant. So you may have heard in the news a little bit about turf replacement, and what does that mean? It means taking those grassy areas that nobody uses except to water or to mow. You never step on them. It means transforming those into more water-wise, lower-water-use landscapes. The green spaces that the community loves, let's leave those alone. Let's be efficient and do that right. And then those spaces that nobody's really walking on, let's make them more efficient. So if we skip to the next slide in 2024, you can see what we've done with that turf replacement grant and also with support through Dillon Town Grants um is create these um essentially a turf replacement program. So right now, what we did is put the resources up available on our website, and then over time, would hope to offer rebates, so that people can transform those unused grassy spaces into beautiful low-water landscapes. What we focus on a lot is direct outreach to large water users. So we'll work with local water departments to understand who's using a lot of water. Can we help them either with an irrigation assessment or a turf replacement project? And then the other big thing that we did this spring, and thank you all, was uh, we're talking about the same irrigation schedules across the entire county. So previously, everybody was kind of on their own, doing their own thing. But now that these irrigation schedules are baseline and uniform, we can talk to people about it. And what we've found is by talking about turf replacement, talking about irrigation schedules, talking about um irrigation assessments, people are excited about this work. They're so interested. I learned actually from our office coordinator that we get like two to three calls and emails a week just about turf replacement. So people are ready for this. They want it, and we're gonna continue being out in the community. We do a monthly nonprofit partnership event series where we're out in the community every month throughout summer to talk to people about water and water law, water conservation. We just did one on wildfire and water. Um, so just again, continuing to build on the momentum that the community clearly has. Uh, but that's an overview of water. If you guys have any questions. Great.
Is anybody changing? Has, have any of the towns changed their code yet to sort of?
Yes. So Breckenridge and Dillon both had it, had schedules codified. So they changed their schedules to reflect this unified baseline schedule.
Turf replacement, going more Zurich or whatever.
Sure. So I think, so what the, what the state passed last year was a ban on nonessential turf. That's that turf that only gets walked on to mow or to water. And so what my understanding is that the towns are looking at their codes to make sure that they align with that ban on nonessential turf in new development. That being said, everybody handles it a little bit differently, like Summit County Government has, I, I want to say it's 10% max on turf in a landscaped area. Breckenridge has square footage limits on turf area. And then people will be updating to align with the ban on nonessential. So, yeah. Thanks, guys.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you. It's very informative. Um, and are you looking to continue your grant this year? Is that, is this just an update, or is it also an ask? Perfect. Okay, thank you. Great. Sounds good. Looks like you're doing great work, and thank you for keeping us up to date.
Thanks.
Well, I have a cute, I do have a question. The solar panels, because she was talking about, they live in a duplex, the family, they're beginning. Sorry. Um, so can, is it easy to do that? Is, does that, because she was, they were talking about it. And I, because I thought when I placed my room, that I would, might try to do.
Yep. The HOA can do that.
Oh, yeah.
For the revenue, yeah. So, and that does, I know, I sold the, in my neighborhood, and she got, she got money back from Maxwell Energy. She still had to pay her bills and stuff, but it is efficient. Oh, really? Okay, that's good information. Okay. I've been thinking about it. Good. They haven't, yeah. Yes, they are.
They haven't, yeah. Yes, they are. They've been talking, they've talked to me about it too. So. That's okay. We've all been there.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Well, great. Thank you for being here. Up next, we have a presentation from Theater Silco about the VIVO after-school program.
Hi, friends. Chris Alderman, artistic director of Theater Silco. I'm actually getting solar put on my house this week down in Aurora. And Tesla XL's paying me to put in a battery and then they're going to rent some energy from me every year. So it's kind of a cool, kind of a cool thing. I know the rules are a little different. I'm here for our annual update on our VIVO program. Town of Dillon was one of the municipalities that was part of funding our program in 2023. And we're here to give just a little bit of an update on the success of the program. But first, we can start with this video if you would like to watch. It's a brief three-minute video that just is a. Zerowen is essentially talking about how brilliant the program is. And if we can't get it figured out, you have it, I think, in your packet and you can probably watch it. At your leisure. But the program has been incredibly successful. We are continuing at three schools. And by the way, this is Sarah Rodriguez, who manages our program. She'll come up and chat in just a second. We're at three schools. We're at Silverthorne Elementary, Dillon Valley, and Summit Cove. Two schools that are very near and dear to you, I know. And we currently serve about 110 to 120 students a day with this free after-school program. One of our, one of our VIVO parents just spoke, just spoke with you from HC3. We have seen a lot of success with towns and granting agencies around the state and country who want to copy the program that we're doing. We have spoken at four, four conferences. One, the National Theater Youth Education Conference that was in Atlanta, asked us to present our program. Colorado Creative Industries, what's the long title that I can't remember? Shared Risk and Protective Factors in Keystone. And then the Colorado Department of Education just asked us to present at their conference in September that's going to be in Colorado Springs. The Shared Risk and Protective Factors is part of the CD-PHE grant that we receive, that we partner with FERC on. And then we received some one-time funding from CDE on a co-grant that we wrote with the school district at the end of COVID to get this program started. Sarah is going to come up and talk just a little bit about some of the data that we collect as part of our grant, grants, that has to do with a lot of verbiage that I'm not as familiar as, as Sarah is.
Sure. Yeah, the word is deliverables.
Deliverables.
Not a word I thought I'd use after theater school. Yeah, I'll tell you a little bit about the VIVO program in just a couple of quick sentences in case you're not fully familiar with it. It is a no-cost program that we offer at these three schools and it has three branches. Two that we've kind of figured out, one that we're dipping our toes into, that's the arts integration one. But the two main ones at the moment are our after-school program and our dual-language production. Our after-school program basically serves about 105 students daily. We have just over 120 families in total. We teach it at those three schools, Silverthorne, Dillon Valley, and Summit Cove. It is, and we do basically do a rotating lesson plan. Every, every two weeks, we sort of switch themes and then every, and we have little like compact lessons from bell ringing till about 5:30. Pickup can be anytime. This is at no cost to families or the schools. We do it at the school, so families don't have to transport. We also do take some of our students home at the end of the day within district limits. And we can go to the next slide. And we do provide a snack. It just means alive in Spanish. It used to be Dual Language Arts Integration Program, and that was too long on a name tag. So we needed a name. Yes, we just wanted a name that felt, that felt right and that was easy to say in various languages in our county. So that's what it is. Yeah. And we have, so we have about seven to eight, seven to nine teaching artists depending. We, like I said, over 120 students, we work with a 15-to-one ratio. And we've collaborated with a lot of other organizations that have wanted to be a part of the solution to this. I believe it's been called the childcare crisis, but maybe they can't do a full VIVO program. So Breck History has come onboard and will help us on certain days. And FDRD will come in as well. And now they're starting their own programs. So it's also, we've also kind of functioned as a little bit of a conduit into, and how do you do this?
The lacrosse.
The Summit County Lacrosse, yes, has reached out to us. So we also collaborate with them. And so we'll do a theater and lacrosse crossover activity, essentially. So to give you some, some super fun numbers, we, our program is flexible. So if, so families can sign up for whatever days they need. So some families need support five days a week, some needed three days a week, some work shifts. And so every week, that kind of changes around. So we leave room to make sure that we can accommodate flexibility. And our lessons are built to accommodate that as well. So even if for like, let's say, two weeks, we're working on puppetry, every lesson of every day will be its own individual little sort of bubble. So that, you know, the students that are there every single day are not, are not bored. And the ones who are there only on Thursdays don't feel like they missed out. Some of the fun deliverables that Chris was mentioning, that we have to submit to the state as per our grants. One of them is called the PAPO survey. They love their acronyms. That stands for Protective Assessment of Program Outcomes, since now this has become a sort of public health initiative. So this is a survey that we have to do with all of our students. And we do that twice a year, so sort of at the beginning of the school year and then towards the end. And it's basically made to measure connectedness with peers, which is considered a protective factor in prevention speak. We also have to submit measures of pro-social and antisocial behavior as well. And we also have to measure sort of confidence, which we do by doing these like on-camera interviews with our students, because it takes a lot of confidence to speak in front of a camera. Yeah, you can go to the next slide. And then I'll very quickly tell you about the production aspect of it. So we, every year, we will do a production in both languages, that being English and Spanish. And we have this wonderful representation of our community on stage. And for two of those years, we were able to bring in every elementary school student in the district. So all K through five classes in all, in every school got to come. So we worked with our district buses and the summit stage. They were wonderful last year. And so we'll do about 24 shows in about two weeks, all of this at no cost to the schools, to the families. Because we want our families to have that experience of coming to the theater and what it's like to walk into the building and, you know, lights down. And then a show starts. And after, and we'll also offer community performance as part of that. So meaning, students liked it, come back and bring your family, also at no cost.
And it's not just SSD. We also work with homeschool, the homeschool system and with the.
And the Peak School as well. Yeah, they've also been wonderful. And as part of our outreach, we also now started teaching a playwriting elective class at the Peak School. We also did a unit at Snowy Peaks. It's a lot of peaks. That one was on characters. So we did three weeks where they came to the theater. And so we taught one of their classes for them, which is one of the wonderful things we've been able to do as part of this, this program. Go to the next slide.
So I think we're all aware of the, the crisis that was happening and it really came to light during COVID. And the county reached out to us in the Keystone Science School and said, look, we have, we have a really major problem on the north side of the county when it comes to wraparound care or after-school care. And the question was, can you solve the problem? And my response immediately was, well, no, we can't solve the problem, but we can be a part of the solution because we're a professional theater company. They're in outdoor education. But let's see if we can be a part of the solution. And the challenges that the science school had with their catch program that they, you know, ran for 10 years and it was a hugely successful program, ended up coming during COVID with staffing. And their model allowed for teaching individuals to work from about 3:00 to 5:30. But that wasn't enough to sustain anyone financially in, in, in the community. And it split their day. So it was also, they were finding challenges and finding people who could work for that time slot. And so slowly, during COVID and immediately following COVID, or not following COVID, during the COVID recovery, they started having to pull out of schools. And so we knew that our model had to be a little bit different to be sustainable. And so we created this dual-language after-school program because we're not a licensed childcare. We are a program provider, which allows us a little bit more flexibility, but everything has to be around the arts. We can't simply let students sit in the corner and do homework, right? We have to keep them engaged and we want to keep them engaged. And so we created this program that was three tiers that Sarah talked about, which was the dual-language after-school program, the dual-language theater production, and then arts integration is when we are working with the teachers in the district to use the arts as a teaching tool. We're not trying to make artists, not trying to make actors or dancers. We're trying to just use those art forms to teach math and science. And we've got a couple teachers who are very interested in using this in their program. And so our teachers, teaching artists are getting trained in arts integration so that they can then work with this, with the school district on that. But as the county came to us and we came back to them and we put together this program, it was, you know, a lot more expensive than what the county initially thought it was going to be. And so the county said, well, we don't know if we can afford to, to sponsor this like we initially said. So not at this time. And, and our response was, well, you brought this problem to us and it is a problem. And this is a way for us to be able to make an impact in our community. And so we decided that we were going to move forward with this. And in the first few months of trying to raise funds, we raised through some creative grant writing, about $250,000. And then we started going out to our partners in the community, Town of Silverthorne, Summit Foundation. We went back to the Board of County Commissioners and we came to the Town of Dillon because these are our partners on the north side that really have an investment in the success of our community and really trying to make an impact on your workforce and Silverthorne's workforce. Because those families were struggling, still are struggling. And that extra two hours at the end of the day is really impactful and meaningful to our families. And so now our program is becoming more successful. We are looking at trying to expand the number of teachers that we have in the schools so that we can expand. On average, about how many people do we have on a waiting list on any given week?
So tricky, but on average, I would say Silverthorne, which is our, our biggest one and Dillon Valley, probably about 10 to 15, but it is a moving document. It doesn't kind, it doesn't stay stagnant because it's got the flexibility. So it's like, somebody does a different activity on Wednesday, so no longer wants Wednesdays. And then, so this family that was on the waitlist wanted Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I can say, well, I can get you in on this Wednesday. So it, it moves and breathes. So, yeah, in the 10 to 15, I would say.
Maybe we go to the next slide, please. So here's just a snapshot of our funding, since I was briefly talking about that. How in 2022, we really went to Theater Silco's individual donors and asked for a rather substantial three-year commitment from, from those donors. And we got five families to commit $30,000 over three years to help seed this program. And we ended up using more of that in the first year as other funding started becoming available, partnering with FERC on a grant that they were doing through CD-PHE that they were struggling with. Quite frankly, struggling with because their clientele was not having the issues that the grant was requiring them to measure. And so FERC said, look, I think, I think this grant better suits you. And so we worked with the state. The state saw that immediately, immediately said, yes, let's funnel that grant through FERC. It is a five-year grant that you, it's a five-year automatic renewal grant. And then after five years, you reapply. And they extended it one more year for us and the next year, we're applying for it. Without FERC, just as Theater Silco. And we feel very confident because CD-PHE is, is connecting us with other communities in the state to partner with school districts and other not-for-profits in the area to start a program like this in their communities. And then the red in 2023, I'm sorry, was the CDE grant, which was the federal relief funds. It was part of the ESER, the Elementary and Secondary Education Relief Fund. But it was one-time dollars that expired, actually, September of this year is the last that we can utilize those dollars. And then in 2024, you can see we have local foundations and then our local government. The local foundation would be the Summit Foundation. And then our local government are our three partners, which are the Town of Silverthorne, the Town of Dillon, and this, the Summit County Government. Thank you. For one more slide, please. Oh, yeah, these are, these are our funders. We also have a small grant through the Moniker Foundation. I think that's about a $10,000 a year grant that this family foundation has provide, provides us. I think our, I think CDE and CD-PHE would really love to see this program expanded throughout the state. Obviously not through us. We would just serve as a conduit to help other communities understand how we were able to pull this together. But it's not done just through us. It is done really with everyone who is on this, on this board to help us fund this program because it's not inexpensive to provide free bus service, to provide free care, to provide snacks, to provide all of these opportunities for our families. It's expensive. And I think that's why we see where Keystone struggled a little bit with their, with their staffing. So this is both an update and, and also coming to the table to ask if Dillon would be willing to, to renew their commitment to the VIVO program. Currently, I've met with everyone on this and everyone has committed for another year. Everyone is using different funds to do it. Summit County Government initially was going to use some strong futures, but decided to use their general operating this year. Town of Silverthorne, I believe, is using their nicotine, which I believe is what Town of Dillon did last year as well. And then, you know, Department of Public Health and Environment, they're using federal monies, I believe, that are, is a conduit through, through them. Summit Foundation is their special initiative grant that they do for, for new projects. It's usually a three-year commitment. And then that, those funds are done. However, the last three or four special initiative programs that the Summit Foundation has funded, they have continued to fund because it's very impactful on the community. So we're hoping that our impact is, is the same there. So would love to have any questions? If you have any. Oh, yes, this is continued collaboration with another not-for-profits. So the, the school district, when I was still on the school board, had started this program that is now called Project Thrive, Project Thrive, which is supposed to be the, the hub for after-school programming. But it's new. They're just trying to make connections. In the meantime, we're able to go ahead and make these connections because we have the infrastructure in place. We are already working with other not-for-profits. We are trying to find ways that even like Jen at HC3, trying to find ways that they can come in because they may not have the resources to do after-school every day, you know, 48 day, 48 weeks out of the year where we do. But they have the ability to come in and do two or three days throughout the year. And we just alter our programming or our curriculum for those times. And so we're looking at continuing to expand that. I mean, my gosh, if we can partner with lacrosse and theater, then we can partner with any organization to do that. So.
Yeah. Love PRD, Breck History, and there are a few more, there are a few more coming. I was just at a Project Thrive meeting today where also Keystone Science School wants to come in and do a little bit of support. I was just at a Project Thrive meeting today where also Keystone Science School wants to come in and do a little bit of support, which is really helpful, because as soon as you have more instructors, then you can add capacity to the, to the program. Yeah, and Chris was talking about, you know, as we, hopefully, we can, we can be helpful to other communities in the, in the, in the state or the country. And that started to happen with Creed Repertory Theater down in Creed. They also have a similar, same but different problem. Their issue is more of a, they don't have school on Fridays, so they're dealing with that. And this, this theater company asked us to consult with them, which I did, on how we did it and the partnerships we formed and looking at it from a public health lens. And they're starting a program this fall because of that. So, which is really wonderful to see, to see that impact. And we wanted to continue, I think. It was really, one of the challenges when starting this was it was an idea, but it was, but how are we going to do it? So now that we've figured some of it out and have some infrastructure, it's wonderful to be able to share it.
The need dropped away at middle school or?
Yes, because once, once the, the children, the youth get to a certain age, the parents feel that they, you know, they find other activities or.
Yeah, there's the, the drop of teens that have different activities. I think there's still, there's still a need there.
Well, and, and I'll be honest, in many situations that we have found, those middle schoolers often become the, the childcare provider for their younger, for their younger siblings in many, many cases. That is what happens. Oh, I had a train of thought and I lost it with that question. Oh, the biggest question that we get is, is about funding, is how does someone in a community get this funding? And I believe when we were first creating this program, we were all on Zoom all the time. And someone raised the question of, well, if we can fund it this year, how do you, how, where are you going to get the funding from next year? And my response was, well, we're going to, we're going to get the funding from you next year, because this is not a one-and-done. Like, this becomes an investment in your community. And it, it only is successful if you have many, many hands in there helping. And as you can see from that slide, like, we don't have one big entity helping us. We really are relying on the community to keep this program going. And including our donors, right? Our donors are still invested in this program as well, so.
I was going to ask about staffing.
Yes, it sounds like it takes a lot of people.
Yeah, you know, especially because we're committed to the, to the bilingual component of it. And so sometimes that provides a little bit of a challenge. Fortunately, we have been pretty successful, even with those who come in with a very rudimentary Spanish. All of our teachers take a 30-minute Spanish lesson every day from our fluent Spanish speakers on staff. And so they're continually growing themselves. And someone who could, you know, speak a few phrases at the beginning of the year, by the time they get to the end of the year, they're having conversations with parents and students. And so that, that professional development component is very important, important as well, because they go through weeks of training on how to do curriculum, how to be a.
Classroom management, early childhood development, all of those things, several weeks.
Yes.
And they're on a, they're on sort of a 10-month contract.
Okay.
Yes, they're, 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 they're full-time adjacent, I guess.
Yeah.
I think as Chris mentioned, in order to be successful, we had to do something that was sustainable, because who can afford to live here with like the two to three hours of work, maybe? So we created these sort of full-time conditions for them for those 10 weeks. So they were 40 hours a week. They're all assigned to different departments within the theater in the morning. Then after lunch, they do their Spanish lesson, then they do their prep, and then they go teach and drive. Yeah, so that was.
We also provide housing for them as well.
Okay.
So.
Because they all come from somewhere else in order to find theater teachers who are also available to leave for 10 months from wherever they are. You know, that's a very specific stage in life as well, who are bilingual or close enough. Yeah, it gets pretty niche.
And how do you get, where do you find housing?
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. That's just, and every year, you know, you increase in your budget, you know, 15% in housing increases and it just isn't enough to, to do it. And so we, we have some long-term leases on a handful of condos that we do. Fortunately, we have some, we have a Realtor on our board, Anne Marioli, who is very connected in the community. And whenever something pops up, like she's letting us know. And so, and then we own one condo here in Dillon, actually, in Lake, Lakeview. That's a three-bedroom, two-bath that we own. And so it gets shuffled that way as well, so. Well, and we thought the, the production component of it is very important to us. I had a conversation, Sarah's heard this story so many times, had a conversation with a previous principal at Dillon Valley East. The, the conversation has stuck with me and our former executive director, because the question was about the, the inequities of state, state testing. And so one of the questions is, Suzie went to the orchestra and her favorite instrument is the cello. Which one of these instruments is the cello? And that's really a, an equitable cultural question to ask for those who may not have accessibility to those things. And so one of the most fascinating things is when we bring these students into the theater and they get this experience of the lights going down on them and then the magic happening on stage is, is really palpable. And because those productions are in, in two languages, you're both feeding those who are seeing themselves represented for the first time and those who may not have an understanding, because they may not speak Spanish. And one of the students from Breck L. two years ago came out and the teacher said, hey, what, what did you think of the show? And the student said, well, I thought it was really great, but I only understood half of it. And the teacher was brilliant in that moment, because she used that as a learning lesson. And she said, well, how do you think your friend Manuel feels when he goes to something that is all in English? And so they were able to have this conversation about how we can be better stewards with each other. So it was just a beautiful moment, so.
Really nice.
Yes, thank you all very much. And please feel free to reach out if you have any questions and I'll keep in contact, make some, see. Thank you, have a good day.
As we are coming up fast on seven, we'll move staff. If you're good with it, we'll move your staff reports to after item eight on the regular agenda. And then we'll add committee reports to the council member comments on item 11. And anybody need a break or are we good to roll right in?
Got a break?
All right, we'll take a two-minute break before we start the regular meeting.